Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. We're gonna call the meeting to order at four o'clock. We're going to change the agenda a little bit and start with the audit. So you're on.
Okay.
This is Robert Dis from the firm.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. My name is not Brad Pitt, as it may appear, but it's actually Bob Dis. I am the head of Alenziya Associates, and I've got the audit for the Allegheny County Public Library System here in front of me. And I'm gonna assume either you've got it in front of you, or you've read it and memorized it, which case I worry about you. But I'm gonna go through it, just hit a few highlights, make a couple of comments here and there. If you have questions, you can ask questions as we go along, or hold your applause to the very end. Either way, beginning on page one is the auditor's opinion letter, as it should be, and it goes on for three pages. It takes three pages to say we give the library a clean opinion, and that means the statements are not material, we give reasonable assurance, the statements are not materially misstated. It goes on for three pages to say that, because lawyers, I'm sure, and this was dated about a month and a half ago, right at the end of January. From pages four through, it's usually ten or so, all right, eight is the management's discussion and analysis. It's not written by us, or actually, technically, it's not audited, but it's written by the library's management, and it just tells the reader whatever they want the reader to know about the current year, meaning 24, and compare that to the prior year, 25, and give any reasons for any major shifts between the two. If you were to look on page seven, that shows a comparison of one year to the prior, and the biggest switch is in grants. Your capital grants and operating grants went down, as you can see over to the right, by a total of about $600,000 or $700,000. And that's why your total revenue is down from the prior year. The actual financial statements begin on page nine. There's two sets of financial statements here, technically, because we've got two different bases of accounting. One is, you first see the general fund and the permanent fund. Those are on the modified accrual basis of accounting. They they only take current assets and current liabilities into account. There's no long-term debt, fixed assets, anything like that. And over on the far right, you see the statement of net position. That's the government-wide statements, and that takes everything into account, like you see you've got fixed assets, long-term debt, that sort of thing. You know, capital assets of about 8.3 million, net of depreciation. And what's the difference between those two statements? If you look on page 10, and it'll show you the differences, and that's always gonna be fixed assets, long-term debt, that sort of thing. The income statements are there on page 11. And again, the general fund and permanent fund are shown on the modified accrual basis. And then you've got the statement of activities over to the right, and there's an adjustments column there, so you can see what the differences are. There's not a whole lot of differences. The main differences are things like depreciation expense. And on the, on the first basis, you increased your equity by about $14,000, and on the full accrual basis of accounting, it went down by about $230,000. And again, the differences are shown on page 12, and that's always gonna be things affecting long-term debt, that sort of thing, long-term assets and so forth. Your net pension liability, things like that. The notes to this statement begin on page 13, and if you're gonna read those, please don't operate heavy machinery. Not a good idea. Note one is always summary of significant accounting policies. These are gonna be pretty much boilerplate, same as in prior years, not really any differences, so I'll just skip ahead and find some differences from one year to the next. Note four, for example, talks about your investments. There's about almost $700,000 in investments in total there, as you see at the bottom. Note seven is your capital assets and depreciation expense, calculated $400,000 of depreciation expense for the year. Long-term obligations are there at the top of page 22, and those are the net pension liability, well, which is actually zero for some reason this year. That's what the actuary said, zero this year. And then you've also got post-employment benefits and compensated expenses, so there's no real long-term loans or anything like that, just those things. You can have dependencies related to party pension plan, note 12, big, long, big, big, long note required by Gatsby that just goes on to say you don't have a pension liability this year. And the note on other post-employment benefits, and that's always gonna be health benefits paid to retirees. Note 13, let's see, subsequent events, donor restricted. Those are the main highlights there. Budgetary comparison there on page 35. We're required to show the original and final budget compared to the actual. I will point out, let me see, next year, or maybe it's the year after, we're required to show the variance between the original budget and the variance between the final budget, but that's coming up in, I think, a couple of years from now, new statement came out. Page 36 is, and 37, actually, the rest, the rest of the report is just required supplementary information for the pension plan and OPEB, showing up to 10 years in total. Finally, the last couple of pages talk about deficiencies and significant deficiencies, material weaknesses in internal control. We actually did not come up with any this year, but government auditing standard says we have to show that. They may exist, but we didn't come across any. And that's the end of the audit report. I will point out that last year there was talk of, there were deficiencies that were not pointed out by the auditor. Since we were not the auditor last year, we could, we're not allowed to point them out, but there were, there was talk of reimbursements being paid twice, such that you bought something and got reimbursed from two different agencies for it. And that, that didn't happen this year, but there is talk that it happened last year, and that's, that's a no-no. I'll just say that.
What's that? That was directed by our That was the purchase of a OPLC machine where we were paid the invoice twice without necessarily knowing it, so that's been taken care of, and we've been refunded our second payment.
Okay, good. Are there questions, comments, concerns, compliments?
It doesn't look like it. Good job.
Well, let me tell you, if anybody has any concerns or questions throughout the year, our number is at the top of page one. Just ask for me, I'm the good-looking one.
Can we need a motion to approve the audit? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay.
Bob?
Thank you.
Okay. Approval of the minutes from the February 11th meeting. Everyone receive them. Motion to approve? Second? All in favor? I thought I heard something. Okay. Any abstentions? Okay. Bring over statistical reports.
All right. Thank you. Sure I don't trip yet? Okay, so you have in front of you there the services summary for February 2025. In most categories, it looks like everything's down from February last year, and we count that to all the weather-related closures we had, especially at the beginning of February. Showing user registrations down 30%, visitors down 19%, physical circulation down 11%, program attendance down 21%, all attributed to lower visitors and icy, snowy, cold conditions. Yes, yes. So digital circulation still growing year over year, and we're seeing more digital users there as well. Anybody have any questions on the back there? Despite the cold and snowy conditions, we still had some great programs and, you know, great, great time had by all, so you can see some of the programs that we had, house pet, house plant bingo, sourdough program, story times, of course, are back and in full swing, and nutrition class. Any questions about the statistics?
Do you go on a financial?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. For February 2025 financial reports highlight, there was $1,306.83 in bonds and fees income, $95.60 in copier income, and $343.11 in printing income. For gifts and memorials, we received a $72 donation from the Western Maryland Watercolor Society designated for art-related programs. On the expenses side, we spent $4,674.05 in cleaning, which is 61003. That's cleaning at all six locations. Speaking of the weather, we had increased costs in snow removal for February. $135 was paid to pile and salt for the February 6th store. I did look to see where we are in comparison to previous years, and we've spent $2,655 a year to date, so it's pretty average for us as far as the total expenses for snow removal. For vehicle insurance, we did sell the gold band, and we received a credit of $842 as reimbursement from the cancellation of the insurance for that vehicle. In 68,000 collections, there was $9,869.31 spent, $0.31 spent on library materials. That includes fiction, nonfiction, large print, and paperback books for adult, teens, and children, as well as wonderbooks and movies and DVD and Blu-ray formats. In 68,500 gifts and memorials expenses, on the collection side, $970.73 was spent for books with several gifts from the Allegheny County Retired School Personnel, and those are memorials for deceased educators, as well as donations to the Fiscal Year 25 Collections Campaign, the Reeves Foundation, and the Donald and Virginia Moran Foundation. Individual gifts from Darren Smith, E.M. Newland, Jessica Roskin, Beth Green, Robert Carey, and Don Wisted were also purchased. On the programming side, $29.28 was spent from a previous gift given to the Laveil Library from the Friends of the Laveil Library in the amount of $2,690 in September, and that is to support programming expenses. And then last but not least, in 69,522, the Rural Collection Development Grant. This grant was given this year by the Maryland State Library Agency and the Institute for Museum and Library Services to support the purchase of books to help offset the 16% cut to books, to the books budget in the current fiscal year. There was $9,917.39 spent in February using these funds. Are there any questions about the February financial activity? Okay, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion to approve statistical and financial reports for February. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. New business presentation. We already did the audit. Gun safety lock giveaway partnership.
Thank you very much. So, in partnership with the Allegheny County Health Department and their local behavioral health authority, all six libraries in the Allegheny County Library System, starting March 24th, will have gun safety locks available for free to pick up at any of our six libraries. We were inspired and saddened by the events of last June, where a five-year-old found a gun and it was unlocked and happened to, and shot himself back in June. Cairo succumbed to his injuries, and we wanted to do something about it, so we've worked with the Health Department to make these gun safety locks available at all of our branches. And you must be 18 years or older to pick one up. There'll be no questions asked. All we'll ask for is your zip code for calculating response to the grant that the Health Department got. So those will be available starting March 24th. There's a tie-in, not only with gun safety, but also with suicide prevention, so it's just a great opportunity to continue the great partnership that we have with the Health Department and the way we've given out COVID tests and things like that, so it's a natural extension to try and improve our community and keep everyone a little bit safer, so we're excited about that. Thank you.
Okay, the next one said, preparation for replacing Sue Rudd on the library board.
Well, I think I can confirm that Sue has decided she does not wish to serve another term. So what we typically do at this point in the year is we ask the board members to, and library staff, to send a potential list of board trustees members to me, and I'll collect the list, and then at the April meeting, we review the list and form a subcommittee to review the candidates and arrange interviews with the subcommittee. So that's how that's gonna work, but it's time to put on your thinking caps and think about perhaps somebody from this room would be a great asset for the library.
For a minute, of course, Sue is gonna be your replacement, been on the board for a couple of years, and certainly I'll miss you. We'll be leaving soon, too.
Okay. Accepting donations on behalf of outside organizations policy.
So I'll be asking to, for the board to approve the policy. Library branches in the past have been approached to serve as a drop-off point, or a point where community can drop off funds on behalf of other community organizations. Have denied these requests because I did not want to put the library or the library staff in a position of handling other agencies' money. Not that any thing would happen, but I just didn't want to have any chance of any potential conflict, so I've denied those requests. So the matter has come up again recently, and since we've dealt with it three or four times, I thought it's probably a good idea to allow the board to weigh in on this policy, so that is exactly what the policy says. So. And it relates specifically to cash and checks and, and as well as putting drop boxes or collection boxes in the branches.
Listening supplement and three, and any kind of money.
Not alone?
In the past, we have been asked to put a collection box in some of our branches for other agencies. We've decided that's not a good idea when they're collecting, or they're having a fundraising drive associated with one of their special events. Community groups, other agencies, paternal organizations, things like that. And again, I just, you know, didn't want to collect money for other organizations. I didn't think it was in the role of the library staff, and I didn't want to put them in a bad position in case something went awry. That's correct. That's correct.
Comments? Julie made a motion to approve second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Abstaining. Party's abstaining, thank you. I'm abstaining. Okay, discussion of the backup budgets for FY '26.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. The results of the tallying of preferences that the board submitted are included in your folders. They have been tabulated. The tally showed a strong preference for not addressing the livable wage issue that was recommended by the Library Advisory Committee. The tally showed a strong preference against closing three libraries. The tally showed a majority preference against closing two library branches. The tally showed a mixed response or preference for reducing the number of hours of operation at the Laveil Branch. And those were the major pieces we needed to get going, so with those major preferences known, the leadership team and I have put together three alternate backup budgets for discussion and further development as we proceed through the budget cycle. In each of the three backup budgets, we're assuming flat funding from the county, no increase. In each of the three backup budgets, none of the branches closed. Each of the budgets balance revenue and expenses. Each of them eliminate funding for the staff bonuses. They eliminate funding for individual memberships. They eliminate funding for library cellphone service. They eliminate funding for contributions to the family and medical leave insurance program, and they eliminate funding for the voluntary federal flood insurance program for the Western Port Library. In addition, the three backup budgets presented here today retain funding for the South Cumberland Library Security Guard, and it also provides funding to assist in sharing the cost of the health insurance increases. So those are the commonalities amongst all three. So if we look at our sheet, shuffle my paper here. If we look at, yep, if we look up our matrix here, we start with backup budget number six. And again, based on the majority of preferences related to closing the branches, we have prepared a backup budget identified as number six that preserves the hours and the days of operation at all six locations and preserves all staff positions at their current levels. What makes this different is that in order to accomplish all we would have to cut the collection, excuse me, collections budget by 78% for $114,000. That would leave about $30,000 for buying new materials for the next fiscal year. It was $180,000. To get to this fiscal year, we already cut 40,000, so it's at $140,000 this fiscal year. Looking at your middle column, the backup budget number five, that considers the mixed preference of reducing the hours at the Laveil Library. In backup budget five, the Laveil Library hours remain the same, and the remaining five library locations lose one day of service per week. Backup budget number five carries out the plan that as funding decreases, retaining services at the Laveil Library as the central library location in Allegheny County will be the priority. Backup budget number five eliminates three part-time positions and two full-time positions, and would allow for a 3% cost of living increase. To be determined, most likely in the public services department because of the reduction in the number of hours open.
So the people actually got to do it?
Yes. It has not been determined, but that is the leading candidate, yes. The third backup budget for your consideration is backup budget four. And in backup budget four, it envisions that all six locations, including Laveil, lose one day of service per week. That is the, that entails the elimination of four part-time and two full-time position. Backup budget number four also allows for the 3% cost of living increase with no reduction to collection funding. So those are our three options that we can discuss, because what I would like to do is get the preference from the board, which of these options they would like for further development as we proceed down the budget cycle. Yes, sir?
These budget allocations are based on the belief that the funding we received last year from the county will be duplicated this year. Okay. Are we getting the signal it's gonna be deeper? Let me, that's up to them, not me, but what we're working on here is a theory of what the funding will be, but we won't know what that number is until the county commissioners let us know, and they have to wait for the state, but just like, when does that happen?
The General Assembly will adjourn around April 7th. It will take approximately seven to 10 days for the county to calculate how much they're getting, and then they will turn that around, so by the end of April, the beginning of May, they should be able to alert the library board what their proposed funding level is for us. So.
We don't know exactly what the numbers are, we do.
Correct. Until, until that happens, we do not have official numbers. We are merely preparing on what is the most likely case, which is flat funding, which is what they mentioned at the February 18th Library Board meeting. If, if they reduce our funding, then we will continue to develop backup budgets based on whatever number they give us.
What's the overall theory or advantage of identifying which of these options the board most approves for a better one? When in fact, it'll be the end of April, before this board or any other board will know what the actual funding is. What's the value of, other than what you've done, which is great work? Why are we, what advantage is happening here by us selecting this? But deep down, we don't know what the payment will be for another month and a half.
The, the, the reason that we're asking for a preference at this point is so that we, as the library leadership team, can as best as we can define what is the best path forward. These scenarios, six, five, and four, have been developed in a very rough fashion. So what we would like to do is further refine them, develop them, so that we could give, give additional specifics about what this would actually mean during operations. We'd be able to answer, for example, Sue's question about which, where's these staff positions being eliminated? Where are they coming from? What are the actual days and hours of each location? Those kind of things would be able to, we'd work on that. So basically, it gives us the time to keep considering these things, and if we're not gonna get our numbers till May from the county, that leaves us two board meetings, and that is the position we were in last year when we had this massive frenzy to get the budget approved, approved. And the only way we could do that was by using some board restricted funds that we were able to transfer over to buy us the time so that we could do the in-depth planning and research that would allow us to respond, I think, in the best way that we can to provide services on less and less money. So it's basically buying time. So it's basically buying time.
I like some of all of them. I don't like any of them. How's that? No, but there are better choices than others. Okay, so seventy eight percent of the book budget. Having a library that books, I understand these are new books, but that just seems a little extreme. I think there should be, I think there could be another way that you could work around that. Parts of these I like is number six. Don't close a damn library and don't, don't make anything different out of this. Flap the others, just keep you off in a minute. The other thing I like is I like having Georgia's Creek or Western Port, however you want to look at it, open. One of them open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and the other one open Thursday, Friday, Saturday. That way you at least have access in the creek to a library six days a week. I mean, I know they're not right there, but at least it's something. I don't like reducing personnel that are actually at the desk doing the work. What else do I like? Oh, there hasn't been a guard at South Cumberland since December. How's it going? Well, he retired December thirty first. All right, what other questions do I have? I have a hard time giving wage crease, sorry, when we're talking about cutting things. So I would like to come up with another budget. Another backup budget. And I think if you sit down with your team, you can figure out a way to do that so that we don't have to make changes that are going to eliminate libraries. We're a service organization. And if we were a business, it'd be an entirely different story, but we are a service organization. We are to provide a service. And I think we need to consider that foremost. But it's just me. Anybody else want to chime in?
We're faced with all bad options. I, in backup five, we still have the Washington Street on board.
Library is moving to an alternate scenario.
Okay, I would be more likely to support Washington Street closing. It is very difficult to, to eliminate positions, but I could see the, the part-time positions a little bit easier than the full-time, except if they are front-facing and serving the public, how are we going to do that? And I'm gonna go along with the board, but do not like not doing anything to try to move the staff up to the full age. So that's my piece.
And Washington Street was the one we could, you know, we said we couldn't actually close.
Yeah, that's the one he said would have to be phased because of the, um.
If some of the collection money come back in a phase process of Washington closing the collections and then maybe moving some of the staff up to the full ages.
If you were to close, just as a bit of background, my statement was that you could close the first floor of the Washington Street Library, the library portion. But the second floor, Charles, the C I T Department, the Outreach and Marketing Department, H R, and my office, because of the complexity of moving basically the I T department out would require additional time beyond July one of twenty twenty five. So that's why we'd need additional time to move out of the second floor. If you just closed the first floor of Washington Street, you would certainly save on, some savings on utilities. Your biggest savings is going to be on the staff. And your second biggest savings is going to be roughly thirty thousand dollars in collections that we would not buy for that branch.
These people are, are working on the second floor, are required by various regulations to have the elevator, the elevator inspections just so expensive. And I, I just wasn't sure how that worked when as far as being compliant with rules, regulations, laws, et cetera. Occupy that building, you have to have it inspected.
We would have to do some research and find out specific requirements from the Department of Labor and Licensing to find out what are the requirements for the elevator.
Or you pay fines. And there is no one, I know that from another business. But they would also need it to move the things. They're not going to be able to handle all that stuff. I can't imagine walking down steps. I'm sorry. She asked if the offices upstairs could be moved to the first floor to eliminate the elevator. But if you occupy the building, you have to keep your elevator or else you pay huge fines and. Well, right now, we can't hear any public comment, so thank you. Okay, so our consensus is we don't like any. Am I incorrect? Yeah, okay, we would appreciate some different backup budgets. Let, let me, may I ask a question? Since that, you know, we took a lot of time to answer your questions on, you know, the, what the recommendations from the advisory committee. Six to one to cancel the contract for the security services. However, there's no, it's totally retained on all the budget options. And I understand we haven't had anyone since the end of December, beginning of January.
Is there a policy or could there be a policy regarding issues related to calling the police in South Cumberland? Are these repeat offenders? Is this a situation where we could eliminate the need by eliminating access or repeat issues?
Like what were the issues that the police were called for? What are the concerns of the staff? Because that's not what we heard at the advisory committee.
Most of the issues that have occurred have been rambunctious teams getting out from school and the the benefits of having the security guard at the front entrance is when those individuals, when those teams walk down the street and they pass the library and they see that someone's there, they keep on going. Without that particular security guard, then I'll come into the library and it's, it's, they are rowdy and rambunctious. And that's pretty much the issue, what we're trying to do. So it makes it a bad environment for everybody else that's in the building.
And we discussed with Cumberland City Police to have a police officer there when schools let out?
We have had the Cumberland City Police in for many discussions and we have requested walkthroughs and we are on their short list to visit. It doesn't seem to prevent the issue perhaps in the long term or even in the medium term. Since we've had the security guard for the last two years, we've had zero calls to the police. He's been gone for two months and now we call the police again.
Is there actual destruction of property or, or anything that would be breaking the law? Or is it just putting staff in a situation that they should not be in in terms of dealing with or behavior and that kind of thing? Or is there a way to look at programming that would pull them in and entertain them for a little while? Let them cut loose for a couple of hours after school, read some books, I don't know. But anything that would promote more positive behavior as opposed to just hold their back, calling the police and the solution being eighteen grand a year paying the security.
Oh, I agree that the security guard at South Cumberland is low-hanging fruit in terms of the next thing on the budget cut. The county reduces our funding, I think it's low-hanging fruit. Yes, there's been disruption of property sofas, chairs, games, materials. We've had after-school programs in the past. Those individuals don't participate, so they go to other areas of the library and carry on as if there were no program offered at all. So those are many things. So some of the things that we have done to try and address the issue, none have been as effective as the security guard.
Can I make a note?
Wait, ask it again.
Just a quick note, I don't usually make a comment, sorry, during discussions, but I just wanted to note that, first off, the advisory committee did not have any staff that are permanently at the South Cumberland Library on it. And secondly, I worked at South Cumberland Library for a year before we did have a security guard. And yes, there were many instances of people breaking the law. Bites in the parking lot, bites in the library, drugged in the bathroom, left by the public computers. So, and I believe those have significantly been reduced by the security guard. I am neutral on the issue, like John said, and you know, it's low fruit on the, next on the chopping block. But I just wanted to give that perspective, being someone who worked there for a year and before, before we had a security guard. Thank you.
Well, John, if we installed a, a card reader for everybody to scan when they came in, we would be able to identify the miscreants and possibly do something about that to reduce, reduce the need for a security guard.
These individuals don't have library cards. They come in to use the services, but they don't borrow, so they don't have library cards. They use guest passes and they make use of the facility.
I'm not trying to be funny, but why can't we engage all the darn prisons, I mean, all the prisons we have to get some work release to volunteer to do that? When I, when I worked in Atlanta, we had a process, when I worked in Atlanta, we had a process where work release actually worked on my campus. There were probably two of them and if you get a chance to be out in the public and do some public good, it adds to good time and other things and it will give the prisoner something to do. Maybe once they get out, they go get a library degree and work with them. Yeah, just, just.
Community service. Community service outs.
So may I summarize, but I think the desire of the board is, and you can affirm or add to it. You would like the library administration and leadership team to develop another budget where none of the libraries closed, no positions were eliminated, no changes to the hours. Minimal reductions in collections. How does the board feel about quadrupling the cost of health insurance? Because that's what it's going to be for our staff to go from fifty dollars a month up to two hundred dollars a month. That may be relatively cheap, but for an organization that uses health insurance as a perk because of our low wages, it no longer is a perk and it will make us a less desirable employer in the community. So with the twenty percent increase in health insurance the county is projecting, those are the costs that will go up for most individuals being covered. It also would eliminate any potential wage increase. So it would seem to me that by preserving the collection, you're sacrificing quality of life for the staff. But we can certainly develop that budget.
How much do they pay now? That's all right. How much do they pay now?
How much do they pay now?
Who, the staff? The staff pays six percent of the monthly total. So that's roughly fifty dollars a month they contribute to health insurance. So that price would go up if we didn't approve any additional funds for health insurance. Total increase, which is going to be around twenty one percent, is going to be an additional two hundred dollars. So that'd be anywhere from two hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars per month for each individual employee with individual levels of coverage.
I'm, I may be a owner, but as you were developing this, again, my preference would be close the first floor of the Washington Street. Do what we can, if we can't give the staff a wage increase, at least give them some more money for their hip. Keep Georgia's Creek and Westport open, close the first floor of Washington Street.
Yeah, I, I think Arden's suggestion when we're preparing the budgets, the backup budgets, that there should be one that takes that in mind because we need to see it on paper. What would it help us, even if it was one, year one versus year two? I think we need to see that on paper because that was, everything has on our various surveys has been three or two. I think we need to have a one also listed.
Is that three percent inclusive of all staff or only that hourly reach? I would like to see three percent for the lowest paid. Propose three percent for the, the non-livable wage. Is that enough for right now?
Very broadly speaking, okay. Faced with what we think will be the limitation on revenue that the county can give us, very, very broadly speaking. When we look at these various techniques or possibilities, it's a too broad a statement to say that what we anticipate to make that budget meet the money we get is either the closing of branches or affecting the employment. That's probably correct. Affecting the employee of this library, either in terms of keeping a job or of maintaining healthcare. And also potentially significantly reducing the cost of upkeep of, what's the phraseology when you bring new books in and what have you? Okay. Are they the two broad areas? Are they the two broad areas where the money is if we have to find a hundred and fifty or a hundred and eighty thousand bucks? More or less one of those two areas, not understand this budgetary process.
Lisa has a comment behind me as well. Uh, the staffing costs are seventy percent of everything of our entire budget. Um, I think the short answer is yes, it is either uh facilities or staffing. One of them has to take, um, one of them will be disadvantaged more than the other. So Lisa, did I cut you off?
Uh, I just would echo that, that um just looking at the expenses for the library system, seventy percent of the expenses are wages and salaries. Seven percent of the expenses are collection. That's the next, that's the next second category of our expenses. It goes from seventy percent for wages and salaries. And the next uh level of expenditure is collections at seven percent. And then everything else is just uh, you know, some of the expenses aren't even a percent. So the vast majority of our expenses are our employees as well as their benefits. Um, so I think that um you know, in my opinion, in looking at all of the bills that we are paying.
Lisa, if you're going to continue that.
Sorry, sorry.
Start that nice and loud.
Uh, just to repeat, the seventy percent of the operating budget expenses are wages and salaries. That includes what we're paying the staff and and that includes the health insurance. Um, and the next level down for our expenses, the category is collections, which is all the books, the DVDs, that is seven percent of the expenses for the library system. So there's quite a difference there between those two categories. Um, the other areas of expense, all the utilities, um you know, all the other, you know, supplies that we use to keep the library operating. Those are, you know, some of them don't even make up a percent of the operating budget. So when we're talking about um what's what's kind of been in the forefront of my mind throughout this whole process is seventy percent of the library's operating budget is wages and salaries. And there are twelve of our employees who don't make a livable wage. That's a problem. And that's been a concern of mine from the get-go with this is, you know, I I think that that speaks volumes as far as the problem that we're up against is, you know, we're spending most of our money on our staff and we're not really doing well by about a dozen of them. So um, that's that's all I would say. Uh, there's a small budget for programs, a lot of that is covered with um um some grant funds, but operating wise, I'd say around um maybe eight or nine thousand dollars for the library system, for all the programming supplies that they need.
I have a question. Health insurance. Does all staff only pay six percent towards their health insurance?
The library system piggybacks off of county government's health insurance plan. Um, in hearing potential twenty one percent increase in health insurance costs, we are exploring, researching options to go with another permanent carrier as a way to reduce costs. The way the current health insurance system is set up inside the library system is if an employee chooses individual coverage, the library system pays ninety four percent of that premium and the employee pays six percent. If the employee chooses employee spouse or employee family, the library provides the ninety four percent of the individual coverage. And then the difference between that premium and the total is split fifty fifty between the library system and the employee.
Is there a way that the staff that are not making a livable wage um above that pays a higher percentage towards their health insurance since they have the disposable income to do so? That would reduce some of the health insurance costs. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Right.
So twelve people wouldn't, they would pay six percent and then from, and I can't remember the salaries, but maybe pay ten percent. And then not fifty fifty, but maybe seventy thirty. Thirty, 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 thirty-two employees. Yes.
There are currently twenty-two employees enrolled in the, enrolled in health insurance with the library system. Twenty-two.
Anybody thinking of retiring?
You can ask.
The question was, is anyone thinking of retiring? And that's not a question we can ask. Okay, so we want.
Okay, so I'm not run out of this place uh with my next comment, but is is there a way that the commissioners could levy a special one-year tax that will bring the livable age, keep George's Creek and Westport open and um provide the wage increase? I mean, is there, no, there's any commissioners here? No, oh, you said no, okay.
No, there's no commissioners here, but the question, could they help the library system in other ways? I mean, don't they do like snow removal and grass cutting? There's other things they could do to help out to cut I don't know, the cleaning costs. I could sign the the checks. It takes a lot of money, termite inspection and snow and so on and so on. There's, there's so many things and if they could help us in some way that was maybe not monetary, but a way that they could um stretch some of their people and help us just a little bit more.
I would venture to say they're going to say that's going to cost them.
Use the inmate proofs.
Renee and I met with County Administrator Bennett in December and while we were looking at the draft of the Library Advisory Committee's ideas. And we pitched the idea is the county in a position to help us with the two biggest issues, the IT department. And then there was also a suggestion, uh could the county help us out in some of the HR capacity? And the short answer from County Administrator Bennett was no. The county was not in a position to help us with those things. And I believe um if you asked about public works such as mowing the lawn and doing building inspections, we've gotten great service from them, but we can't, uh but that service is on a as needed basis as opposed to a continuous regular maintenance kind of thing.
Okay, so we're back to we want new budgets options.
So um so the new summary, the new backup budget uh will include closing Washington Street's first floor. Uh, we're going to give three percent increase for the twelve staff that aren't making a livable wage. We're going to come up with some sort of tiered health insurance contribution so that those above the wage pay more than those below the wage. And we will minimize reductions to the collection budget, but keep all six locations open at their current hours. Is that the desire? Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. It would be five. You're correct. Thank you, Dan. But we would, what about the staff that, well, my question would be if we're closing Washington Street Library, those staff stay or those staff positions get eliminated?
What do you have?
Yeah, what is the staffing?
Two and a half individuals, both on one tab.
Generally, what what's the beyond the money savings? What's the value of closing Washington Street? I mean, it's 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 a budgetary thing, but is is Washington Street um less used? What what's the the concept of why Washington Street might be closed, but the other six shouldn't? And maybe that's something you have to do with your research. I just don't know the answer to that question, so.
And should a a library close? What happens to the collections and the stuff in there?
The um reason Washington Street Library was put in the mix was looking at usage uh of across all six library systems. I'm sorry, across all six library branches, the least used uh were George's Creek and Westport. The third least used was the Washington Street Library, followed by Frostburg South, and the most used is Laval. So that's how Washington Street got on the list. It also is on the list, I believe, because it has a certain amount of it may may make sense if there's two libraries in Cumberland. The question is, do you need two libraries in Cumberland? And since South Cumberland is busier than the Washington Street Library library, that's why the Washington Street Library was selected. Yeah. Renee's question about what happens to the collections, it depends on which branch is closed. Um, it will either be dispersed to the other locations or it will be uh uh dispersed, removed, eliminated.
I'd like to see that maybe another, maybe two, two versions of this budget. Because I still would like to see what it would be, when we keep all the libraries which comes all the libraries in one. I'd like to see what affects the total budget. And I think that shares everything equally. That's that's all.
Take a look at backup budget four, that seems to do that, but anyway.
May I know that an I and no one else in this room wants to close the library, but I think we need to have a couple more backup budgets and see what we can do because it's, I mean, it's it's just like closing a school, closing a library is a very sad thing, but we have been struggling this, of course, not just last year, it's been several years. We need to try to figure something out so that we're not just doing something stopgap. We, that we are not saying, I'm just saying, again and again and again, saying, what can we do? Why is that? We, and there may be no, no good solution. There may be no good solution.
If we were to close Washington Street, would it be beneficial to have an extra person at South if you didn't have a security guard? You know, if you said they don't come in, if they see somebody sitting there, could we put an employee there for the three hours that that person's there?
Staffing would help with the tweet.
Because they only have two down there, right? When they're, when they get all those people in. Two and a half, three.
John, tip it back to the South Cumberland. Typically, what hours are the most threatened? Kids get out of school, I guess, where it doesn't matter. What is it? Two thirty to five? Is that when the danger zone is or whatever it is? Is there a defined period of time when these kids are on their way home, et cetera, et cetera? Or does it go on and on and on? I mean, can can we identify two or three hours that are where some attention needs to be provided by an adult? And if so, how do we figure out those hours?
The South Cumberland Security Guard is budgeted for twelve hours per week. Those hours are scheduled in the after-school hours with the idea that it is the time between two thirty and six or three and six that are the most um their services are most needed.
Okay, so I would suggest several new backup budgets.
And of of course, Judge, that um is during the school year. During the summer, when there is no school, it it varies throughout the day. There's no consistent pattern other than um it comes and waves.
That's correct. Correct. That comment was, does it happen during the summer yet?
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, we need several different backup budgets. Is everybody okay with doing several?
We're going to base those budgets on what we're anticipating, what we got this year and anticipating hopefully that we will get next year. Correct. Okay. So if you're putting the budget together, is it possible to have Budget Plan seven and then a ten percent reduction in seven to see what that looks like or Budget Plan Eight with a ten percent reduction just in case?
There's also a twenty one percent increase in health insurance. If we stay with that.
Are we done with the budget?
Oh, okay, we're done.
I have two other ideas.
Library board decision is becoming a part-time job, people. I have two motions that I would like you to consider, I'd like the board to consider. One is we've heard a lot of talk about volunteers in the library, the library. I I would like to move that John and Leadership Team develop a library system volunteer program that can be used in each library. Logic one system so that we all have the same guidelines to follow, but each library has their own volunteer coordinator and volunteers.
We'll move.
I did move it. You want to second it?
Oh.
All in favor? Any opposed?
John, I have written down, I'll give them to you. Uh, my second one is for a fundraising motion. Um, that John and Leadership Team develop a fundraising policy for people and organizations that want to help with funding in the library so that when people call with ideas, we can thank them and hand them a policy as to what is and what is not allowed. And probably some idea of where that money would go if you did get some. That was a motion.
In favor?
Okay. I don't even know where we're at. Unfinished business. Adjustment to the second draft of the proposed, so we're not doing budget again, are we? Oh, we're doing another one.
At our February eighteenth meeting, we uh the board approved the second draft of the proposed operating budget that we're going to give to Allegheny County in the hopes that they will fund it. It included a hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase of county funding. Um, what we, because we got the financial audit the day before, February eighteenth meeting, we had the assumption that there would be carryover funding. It turns out in looking at that, uh there is no carryover funding that we can carry forward from fiscal twenty-four into the fiscal twenty-six. So if you look at the the uh the proposed operating budget, that's included in your bundle, you'll see in the income side, FY twenty-four carryover, in this current year, we were able to carry over thirty-five thousand from fiscal twenty-three because we didn't, we were underspent our budget. In fiscal twenty-four, that is not the case, and we have no carryover. So we uh in essence are thirty-five thousand dollars. So we, in essence, are $35,000 in the hole. Not that we were, did not want to send the county an unbalanced budget. So what I'm requesting is an adjustment and making up that $35,000 with the following measures. Looking at withdrawing from the Maryland Municipal League Consortium for alternate coverage for the family and medical leave leave insurance for $3,000. Eliminate $17,000 from the budget for those contributions that we would have to make. Eliminate $6,000 from the annual staff bonuses going into fiscal '26. And eliminating between $8,000 and $9,000 from the collection. Totally knows up, makes up the $35,000 loss by not having that carryover.
So you still want to send a budget to the county that is hearing more money?
I missed the first part of yours, sorry. Did you say you still want to send a budget to the county asking for more money?
No, we have to send a budget. Prior to them even knowing what their allocation is going to be. We have to provide it. The last, that's what the decision is.
So we have to give them a budget, and we're giving them a budget asking for more money.
Asking for what? It would pay without any adjustments? In, yeah.
Yeah. Didn't they kind of like say last time when they hear not to do that? That we weren't getting any money? Did I miss that?
And what I heard, at the February 18th meeting, the county commissioners and county administrator Bennett said it would be a very heavy lift for them to provide any additional funding. We, as a library, I believe it is our responsibility to tell them what our actual needs are. And that is what the proposed budget does. It tells them that we need to pay our staff. It tells me we need to continue our health insurance costs. It says that we need to buy new materials. So we're going to present to them an honest budget, and that's where the extra $160,000 comes from. If they choose not to fund it, that's on them. We gave an honest request of what we needed, and that's the point of those budgets that we have to give them usually this time of year. And then our backup strategy was to develop the backup strategies in the case they were unable to fund our increase. So yes, it is very, very unlikely that they will be able to fund our request. But nonetheless, we think it's important, I think it's important, to give them a full and honest disclosure of what our needs are to operate the library system that everybody in the community is accustomed to.
I just think it was a 21% increase for health insurance or was it the 14%?
Definitely it's 14%.
To keep that. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Pass it to the leadership team.
Do you have any leadership team questions? Okay. Public comment. That's me. Okay. Before we start public comment, I'd like to read the guidelines for public comment. And public comment periods in the central part of local government meetings. There, these are guidelines for public comment periods in regular meetings of the Allegheny County Library System Board of Trustees, further known as the board. It's important for the board and the public to be very clear about the purpose of the comment, public comment period. This is an opportunity for members of the public to inform the board about their views. The meeting itself belongs to the board. The public does not participate in the decision-making. Instead, it provides input to the board, which takes the input into consideration in making its decisions. Comments from members of the audience are reserved for the public comment period of the meeting agenda. All speakers should address their remarks to the chair. All speakers should give their name and address. All speakers should keep to the predetermined time limits. The board may vote to extend the time limit. Speakers may not give their time to other people. The board has the right to invite anyone to speak whom it wishes to hear from at other times than the public comment period. This is done by unanimous consent or majority vote.
So the obvious question is, why is this different than our February meeting? Why are we following these guidelines for public comment now? The short answer is that a typical library board meeting, the matters are routine, and we can deal with them right then and there and answer those questions. What we've learned at our February meeting was that the questions that are being raised are complicated. We can't just wing it on the spot and provide answers. It would not be productive or fair to give you incomplete or unclear answers. The matters that we're dealing with, budget, people, personnel, closing buildings are complex and complicated. We want to be able to respond in a thoughtful and deliberate manner. We want to provide you with an accurate and truthful answer. For example, if you remember the February meeting, Mayor Coburn asked me if I could have a report ready the next day at noon. I optimistically said, sure, I can do that. Well, it turns out I was wrong. It took two more days to do that. I wasn't able to produce that report until Friday. So we don't want to repeat that mistake and aggravate the community any more than we have to. So as we continue to work together to find the best solutions to the county and the state's budget woes, we wanted to be upfront with you about why we are now following the board-approved guidelines for public comment. We will take all of these questions, all of your questions, your advisement, and we will respond on our website and on social media by Monday, March 17.
Okay. Carol Kenny. I'm going to take three minutes. It's already, okay, it's on, okay. And I'm not going to ask any hard questions. My name is Carol Kenny, K E N N Y. I'm chair of the Westernport Friends Group, a volunteer at the library. And I was actually a former director of nursing at, for State of Maryland, and I am retired. Um, I started looking at some of the financials. And this is a count listing by your agency dated December 23rd. So a lot of this that I'm going to talk about is money that goes to Westernport Library. And most of them are restricted funds. The Oki Michael Fund has $29,436 in it, and they're restricted funds. Oki Michael was very instrumental in getting the present library where it is today. He was a businessman in Tri-Towns area. The Norman and Raymond Reeves Foundation, that's a grant that the Westernport Library gets. It's $5,000 every year. They've been probably getting it for 10 years. It's designated only for the Tri-Towns and Pfizer area. The town of Westernport, I think, is going to give $5,000. Carol. Huh? What's my, oh, sorry. We also last year had a foundation donor that gave us $20,000. And it was used to purchase our security system. And the rest of it was used for collections. And they have also expressed interest that they will give that money again, probably in June. So we don't need another security system, so that's probably going to be another $20,000. And our friends group has $2,700 in for a grand total of $62,136, which is their, it's designated funds for Westernport. I'll give you copies of that. I have it all in here. The other thing I wanted to say is I got a letter or an email from Representative April McLean Delaney. I don't know whether you all have seen that or not, but just a couple sentences here. She says, libraries are especially essential in rural communities where they provide access to education, technology, and public services that many residents rely on. Closing those vital hubs would be a major loss. And I will continue working to ensure that Western Maryland has the education on digital resources they need to thrive. And she says that she has reached out to the Allegheny County Board of Commissioners. Oh, there's a meeting tomorrow, who fought friends for. We can, we can scan the letter and everyone will read it.
It's, it's here.
Okay, I have copies.
So you're not going to let anyone talk with any medicine?
May I say, this is John Smith. And, and we understand that. Donna Morgan?
I got, we have a chance that a minimum of minutes.
My name is Donna Morgan. I live in Long Island, Maryland. I'm a retired nursing home administrator. I'm a registered nurse. I've raised my children in Long Island. I lived in New York City for 11 years. I know what budget is about. And I want to thank the board members for speaking up. You did answer a lot of my concerns. I am concerned, Mr. Todd, regarding cutting staff. And does that include your administrative staff? I would also like to keep all the libraries open. I have dealt with Garrett County libraries. And they have more hours in all of their groups. Ours is settled in Laveo and Frostburg. And I am concerned that it's not distributed where it needs to be in Georgia's Creek. I thank you very much.
Vicki Brenneman.
Hi. I'm Vicki Brenneman. I'm with the Vicki Brenneman Insurance Agency in Cumberland, Maryland. And I don't really have anything else to say to the board. They've heard my opinions many times. They know what I believe, and I want to thank the board for the hard work that they do. You've seen what they're doing here today. The decisions are not easy, and we do have some very long-term members on this board that have done an excellent job and have backed us in the past when we needed it. And I feel they're trying to do that today. My three minutes, I want to spend giving you a chance with a show of hands to give your opinion to the board. Because I know you did not sign up to speak because you don't want to stand up in a crowd of 100 people and make your views known. But if you can just do a show of hands, we can reflect the opinions that the board needs to see. They know you're here. They may or may not know what it is that you believe. Just by a show of hands, show me which library you're here to represent, and you can represent all of them or none of them. If you're here to represent Frostburg, raise your hand. If you're here to represent Washington Street, raise your hand. If you're here for Georgia's Creek, Westernport, South Cumberland, Laveo. So we have representation for all of the libraries. Raise your hand if you support closing any library. Okay? It looks like we, the people, do not support closing libraries. We've heard the budget considerations. Do you know how the libraries are funded? They're funded largely from state tax dollars and county tax dollars. Where do those dollars come from? Raise your hand if you know where those dollars come from. Raise your hand if you're contributing those dollars. These are your libraries. Your opinion counts, what you think matters. We are the people who own the libraries. I know the libraries have individual friend groups. The libraries have people who want to volunteer. If you can work that in, I know there's some restrictions on that. Raise your hand if you would be willing to support volunteering at your local library when you're able. You've, you've got a lot of, lot of people hours here available if that can be worked out. Raise your hand if you're willing to do fundraising through your friend groups or through other efforts. This is a lot of dollars we're willing to speak with in order to support our public libraries. These are your patrons. These are your, your people who, who own libraries. These are your people that want you to understand what they believe, and thank you for your time.
Craig Alexander?
Craig Alexander, administrator for the town and middle address is 18600 plus 4411. Frostburg, Maryland 21532, to meet all the obligations to name and address. Thank you. So it's a bad optic to change the way this meeting is going to be conducted after we've had about three other meetings where people were able to finish their thoughts. And I myself, Carol Kenny didn't take exception to it, but I take exception to you cutting her off in the middle of what she was trying to say. I don't know what's left to say that hasn't already been said. I'm glad that you are finally moving to some budgets that don't close any libraries. Because all we've heard is you sticking to your original submitted budget. I too am a retired state employee. I worked for over 30 years, and I worked in the budget process. I was a fiscal officer. Anyhow, the state gave us a mark. And that was our, that was it. We had to develop a budget that equaled that mark, and that was it. There was no going back and asking for more. They were stomping my feet and saying, no, I want this much money to run a library. To recap the meeting in Westernport, you had a whole bunch of people tell you the impacts closing, in particular, Westernport and Georgia's Creek Library would have on that Georgia's Creek southwest corner, Valgamey County. It's the most underserved area in the county as far as internet access goes. We're in Frostburg tonight, we're in a high school. And the high school has resources that people can use to substitute for a library. Georgia's Creek has none of that. There are no high schools between Frostburg and Westernport. There are no colleges between Frostburg and Westernport. So the Frostburg and the Cumberland area are served by additional library-like resources that are not available in the rest of the county. And also to summarize the Westernport meeting, County Commissioner Caprilli got up in front of you and said, there'll be no more money coming forward. And Administrator Bennett said, there'll be no more money coming forward for your budget. I think I would be embarrassed to go in there and still submit to them after they've told me that. A budget that's for more money than they're willing to give you. You need to work on a budget that's going to meet what you know your mark is from them, which is last year's budget. And try to come up with something to keep all these open. I agree with the one board member that said libraries have to have books to lend. But in order to make things meet for one year, I would not be opposed to cutting the collection budget. And then buy yourself some time and keep working through the whole process until you can come up with a budget that works for you. And when the state has a bad year, there are no pay raises, there are no cost of livings, anything else. You fight the bullet and you survive until the next year. Thank you.
Jim Ritchie?
Hi, I'm Jim Ritchie. I'm from Long Island, Maryland. And
I'm from Lonoconey, Maryland, and I am impressed with the working session you have here tonight. You've answered a lot of my questions. I just want to say that I'm president under the Friends of the Georgia's Creek Regional Library. We came to the party a little late, but we've raised a bit of money. We are willing to use that money and raise more as operating funds if necessary to keep the libraries on the creak. Thank you.
Judy Hamilton?
Yeah, I wrapped up.
Hello, I'm Judy Hamilton, and I am the mayor for the town of Westernport as long as, as well as the lifelong citizen there. As libraries have evolved through generations, the one thing that is important is to remember our libraries, like our schools, are an integral part of our community. We have stood by, and when help needs to be made in this county, it's always our end of the county. We've lost our high school. We no longer have that, and it's interesting that the other parts of the county never seem to get those cut. While the library is about books when I was young, the library is so much more now as we invite our youth into a building with technology, technology and interactive platforms that then entice them maybe to pick up a book and take it home to read. As we often hear of children who are not reading at grade level, at grade levels in our school, it is unconscionable for those of us in decision-making positions to throw our libraries to the curb. While we understand the costs of making cuts as we do in our town all the time, one of the things we try to never do is get rid of any of our resources. What purpose would a vacant building do sitting in the town of Westernport? Absolutely none. But if we take the bold steps to reduce costs without eradicating our library, the long-term benefits will be felt, whether in our children's scores in school or to our senior citizens that come there to interact in our community. Remember that the library is so much more than a place that houses our books. Westernport is proud of the many services we provide to our community, and as mayor, I know firsthand the fiscal struggles we face, but turning our backs on our community is not the answer. Closing our library is not the answer. I find it very interesting that we're sitting here debating on a library that has so many challenges in South Cumberland and never once has that library been considered for closure. Not that I want to see it closed. I feel all of the libraries need to remain open, and I appreciate you as the board hearing you guys make those same statements. Don't close the libraries. Thank you.
Charles Schaffney?
I know.
Good evening. Charles Schaffney, Westernport resident. I've transplanted in Westernport. I grew up in Baltimore. I was a school administrator there. Did very well the budget process. I want to thank the board for listening to us, and I want to hear more from you. We hear an awful lot from senior staff. We need to hear from the board. One of the problems I take exception to is that as part of the advisory committee, there were people who were identifying themselves as school, as staff from South Cumberland who said that the security guard was a joke, and now we're being told that, no, the staff is saying something different. They were there in that meeting. There were staff there. We need to hear from the board, not so much from senior leadership. I've dealt with budget process, having to cut staff in schools. It's the hardest thing to do. Our libraries and schools were one of the first places that got cut. We cut libraries, we cut phys ed, we cut art, and now we're suffering for it. We can't cut anymore. When dealing with school cuts, it always started at the top. No matter, if, as a principal of a school, if the school was going wonderfully, I got the kuda. If things were going out of control, if there was a toilet leaking, I got the blame. That has to stop, sorry, here too. We heard today that last year we did the stopgap to allow some in-depth planning and research. Where is that in-depth planning and research? What has been done to plan so we're not sitting in this position again? I've not seen it, I've not heard it. Been on the committee, we've not heard it. So I want to look at, want you to look at when you're making these decisions and looking at staffing, that load lot of fruit, those people are not making minimum wage, they're not the ones that are going to make the difference. Do we need to look at new leadership? Thank you.
Trish Morgan?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, and I'm so sorry to hear that Sue Rudd has resigned from the board. I think that's a, oh, well, I'm sorry. I thought you said you resigned. Apologies. Well, at any rate, I, I too am impressed with the work that has been shown and talked about this evening. It does give me a level of confidence in John that I did not have previously, so I do commend him for his work. He did send me an email today and told me I could speak a minimum of three minutes, and I'm sorry, I'm going to take it. My name is Trish Morgan, and I live at 306 Lockton Street in Westernport. Been a lifelong resident of our small town of 2,500 people, and I respectfully direct my comments to Renee, who is the trustees chair, and the other six who serve on the trustees board. So before I go on, I like, Vicki, like to have a hand count, a hand show of those who are on this board who are going to make the decision that we all look forward to in a good way, and we hope that they don't close any libraries. Could you show me who you are? Renee Nysen, show the group who you are. Thank you. Deb Hendrickson. Dr. Bingman. Sue Rudd. Julie McCoy. Gary Leisure. And Dr. Artie Travis. All right, thank you. And then introducing the executive director, Mr. John Toh, who's been with the ACLS for over 25 years. John, are you here? All right, thank you. Okay. I am the president of a new 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization called Save the Westernport Library, and our board has been very busy working with Mayor Jack Coburn of the Georgia's Creek Library in Coney, and our groups are actively fundraising and have successfully raised thousands of dollars to date. We have been in contact with Governor Westmore, our senators and Congresswoman April Delaney, and have a letter handout for your records. My granddaughter Aubrey is here with me. She is an eighth grade student at Westmore Middle School, and she has two handouts for all the trustees. We have been working with local and state media, newspapers, magazines, and radio. We have written a grant to the Community Trust Foundation in Cumberland, writing this grant regarding a family fun day in September for one in Westernport and in Coney. Yes, September. Library doors and shutter away services in our communities. Thank you. You seven people will tell our communities that your staff is too busy to write grants and fundraise and find creative ways to meet the budget shortfall to save our libraries. You seven people will tell our children and all of the other patrons that we've had to find transportation to Frostburg, Leveil, or Cumberland, where a security officer is required for crime prevention, for heaven's sakes. You seven people will have to answer to hundreds and hundreds of people as to why your executive director with an annual salary of 125K now only has to oversee three county libraries, if that's the way you vote, and 70%, as they've already mentioned, is their budget. 70% is administrative. When you run a nonprofit organization, which I have done for 15 years in my career, your administrative cost should be 35% to be considered a well-run nonprofit. You seven trustees have a lot of thinking to do, and you seven well-educated and intelligent folks have a big decision to make. You seven trustees also have to live with what you decide for the masses. The only say that we, well-educated and intelligent activists, have is to express our opinions and facts of these comment sessions following your business meeting. We are left to get in touch with, two minutes. Thank you very much. We are left to get in touch with radio stations, television stations, newspapers, politicians, county commissioners, congressmen and women, Governor Westmore, and anyone logical who will hear us out. We demand that you close no libraries this year and look at alternatives in cost savings and grant writing, foundation support, decreasing administrative costs so that you're eligible for more grants. I know you don't have a grant writer, maybe you need to find one. Keep our libraries open. We demand it. And you may wonder why I say the word "demand." Who am I to demand anything? But we activists and the political clout and social media attention we have behind us, we all feel we can demand your full consideration. We demand that you run your nonprofit as it should be run, and the budget shortfalls and wanting to just shutter community centers in small towns where services are so needed. Accountability is everything in a nonprofit, and yes, we demand it. Please raise your hands if you support, I know Vicki already did this, but raise your hands because I couldn't see at the time. How many of you want to keep all five libraries open? I'm sorry, all six. I parked five. Okay. That's excellent, and thank you for the extra time. I do appreciate it.
Libraries. So that is not true. I do appreciate the board this evening. This is the first time I've seen the board do that act, and the reason I say that is because I think you board members have been kept in the dark too long. You just found out things at the last meeting you never heard before. You look like deer in the headlights because you were shocked what was being happened. We appreciate the help. I will miss seeing the board. I hope you all can stay focused. Libraries all need to remain open.
Hannah Smith?
No. Can everyone hear me first of all? Thank you. Evening. My name is Hannah Smith. I reside at 15201 Brandywine Drive, Crescent Town, Maryland 21502. I come to you as a Cumberland native, Allegheny County resident, bestselling author, and founder and chairwoman of the Western Maryland Literacy Initiative. In 2014, I graduated from Allegheny High School. 2019, I graduated from the University of Maryland College Park, and right now I'm researching book access at Johns Hopkins University. This is something I'm very familiar with. I'm going to share with you some information that I hope will influence your decision to keep our libraries. We are in a time where we are facing financial troubles partly because of our population in Allegheny County is declining in record numbers. For example, from 2018 to 2023, we lost over 5% of our population density, which was the highest in the state. I understand that some may see this as a reason to close libraries, but I assure you, it will have, it will be a grave mistake. It will have longitudinal deficits to our community for many years to come. What has historically happened to areas with less book access? How does it impact them? Let me paint a picture for you. In areas like ours with weak broadband access, weak public transportation methods, and with a high percentage of people living below the poverty line, people rely on libraries to inform, educate, and support them. Essentially, libraries assist them in being good citizens in our area. In 2011, Camden, New Jersey had several library closures, and people came out to share their thoughts, just as we are doing right now. And with little data to support their arguments, they said that the closures could hurt students the most. Well, I'm going to share with you what happened. The folks who came out to protest the closures were right, because every year since those closures, it disproportionately affected students from lower incomes who relied on those libraries, and it lowered their academic performance and test results in schools. Another example, let's travel a little bit, shall we? In 2017, a little town in the UK called Swindon began closing libraries because of population declines. Does that sound familiar? Sounds familiar to me. After closing libraries, they soon realized that the library was a central hub for order books, relying on the space as a way to build social connections and stay fit and educated as they adjusted to retirement. Closing libraries there socially isolated the older residents, and if you're not aware, the Surgeon General said in 2023 that loneliness is just as bad for someone's health as smoking 15 cigarettes a day. Can we afford that? And even though I can keep giving you examples, I want to offer just one final example. In 2011, when Troy, Michigan closed some of their libraries, they subsequently saw a decrease in jobs in that area. They related the decrease in jobs to the decrease in resume support and technology support that was offered in libraries. I know we can't afford that. You see, when libraries die, so too did the citizens and communities who rely on them. I know it's been done here tonight, but to everyone here with me, can you do me a favor and stand up if a library has ever helped you or if it's to make you feel alive? We are concerned citizens, and we are taking a stand, literally. We are asking that you learn from the failures of other towns and don't allow history to repeat itself here.
Dr. Larry Smith?
Thank you. No matter how old she is, she's always my little girl. Gosh, I'm so proud. The, I'd like to, first of all, just give a, my name's Larry Smith, reside at 15201 Brandywine Drive in Bel Air. I would like to just give a couple of suggestions relevant to some of the points that were made. Security everywhere, whether you're going to Walmart, into a hospital, into a nursing home, into a public school. Very different than what it's been 50 years ago. I can tell you that as a retired school administrator in Washington County. One recommendation that I would give in earnest would be to consider training your staff, all staff, in de-escalation techniques and how to deal with difficult situations. Also, I would recommend, if it's not done, I have not seen it, posting the rules, the expectations, and the consequences what they are. Young people going to a library or to the mall, we live in a time, unfortunately, where many of our kids are the least, the last, and the lost, and they're looking for something positive to do. And I would tell you, I've taken guns from kids, knives, drugs, the dirty beetles, nunchucks in my career, kids, but I'm going to tell you frankly, I've never met a bad kid. Never. I've met kids who made bad choices, but I've never met a bad kid. We need to provide not just de-escalation techniques, but educate your staff on how you deal with students, how you interact with them. I'm not saying it is very about them. I'm sure they're, enough from my experience in all the libraries, I've been privileged to be at the county. They're very, very talented, very dedicated, very competent, but that's something that I would suggest. Also, besides having the rules posted, maybe consider, I like what I'm hearing about volunteerism. In the libraries, we have an incredibly, and I've seen it here tonight, a rich, robust cadre of talented people who are in love with their community and want to be part of the community in a way just not to be a participant, but to shape it. I would recommend also, something to consider, when you can, reach out to towns, for example, in South Cumberland, reach out to Save Cumberland, and engage them in a conversation about doing things like maintaining the grass. I know my time's almost finished, but if you indulge just a moment, if I could ask for you, and if I need to, to revise, extend my comments for another minute, I'd appreciate it. If we can, engage some of the municipalities like Westernport and Frostburg in a conversation about an MOU, just year by year, maintain the grass, maintain the, the maintain the, the, uh, uh, snow removal. That would lift some of that financial burden away from the library system. And with all due respect, I just needed, just for my own benefit, Mr. Todd, with all due respect, I heard you allude to a point that the kinds of services and libraries that people are accustomed to. I can tell you, I know, I know it didn't come through that way, but I just want clarification. It's not what people are accustomed to. It's what people need and deserve. Also, in terms of volunteerism, connect with the high schools. Every high school in Allegheny County has National Honor Society. Connect with those folks. They have an obligation as, as members of the National Honor Society to buy scholarship, leadership, and service. If we can bring some of those N H S students out for a couple of hours a week in our library system, it'd be great for them. It'd also be great for the generational connection they make with the across all ages. Lastly, we're, we're already starting to see it. We're right now in the embryonic stage, if you will, of an incredibly difficult budgetary cycle that I would say that we haven't seen. I've been involved in public policy for forty-five years of my life. I would tell you that in my view, we are right now on the threshold to see some of the most difficult budgets across the country that we've ever seen. We're seeing a steamroll at the national level that's going to cut across the pre-K through twelve education quarter through our post-secondary education quarter, unlike we've never ever seen in the American experience. This is going to have a rippling effect everywhere. We're already start seeing in Maryland, Maryland's budget right now. I worry that right now, what we're seeing is just the beginning of what next year will look like. So I would urge you to continue. We already had some great thoughts here about thinking outside the box. Tomorrow can't be seen in terms of the budgetary process as 2026. It's got to be seen as 2036 with a declining population. Lastly, I would tell you that the just about eleven miles from here, Bennett Johnson came and launched his War on Poverty at Fort Worth High School. It was the second stop. That war on poverty enforcement still continues and not like any county. And in my view, it is so foundational to every part of the fabric of life in Allegheny County in terms of building an education citizenry, in terms of generational connection between folks who are eighty years old and going into a library and connecting with another eighty-year-old or twenty-year-old. Our libraries, not just an important part of our community, they are essential, especially, especially in our rural area. For young people, for seniors, for all of our citizens, whatever you have to do to think outside the box and create it, please do it. Lastly, these board trustees here, they are not, I can tell you, folks are volunteer. And knowing some of them, they are very, very, very talented, dedicated, and good people. One in there, we have one of the most foremost children's literacy experts in the, in the nation, Dr. Bigman. Okay. They're here because they love our community, and I know you do. I know Judge Lazer and all of, all of our members love our community. And Judge Lazer's wife was so committed to this library system, committed to kids' literacy. And I know you want to do the right thing, and I urge you to hear what these dedicated folks have said to you with, with the utmost sincerity and in earnest. And I thank you for the extension of my time.
Reverend Justin Searls?
A little bit. Walking is good for cardio. So my name is Reverend Justin Searls, and I'm, I actually reside right across the state border in West Virginia, but I frequent the Western Port Library because as a reverend, the church of God and the love of God knows no state boundaries or bounds. But I just wanted to talk about the significance of libraries in the course of our history and where they're taking us for our future. When it comes to the definitions of what constitutes libraries, we all have different definitions or concepts. But libraries, to me, are vital centers of knowledge, and the library has served as a symbol of both struggles and triumph. When the printing press was invented around fourteen forty, the ability to acquire knowledge increased substantially. Knowledge went viral, I may be so bold, and it became publicly available for the first time, arguably. With that increase in knowledge, there have been those who have tried to prevent the spread of free knowledge through cutting funding, book bans, raven book burnings. Libraries serve not only as havens of knowledge, but havens for rest as well. Libraries create a safe place for kids to learn new things. Free access to the Internet and other resources are provided to the community at large. In particular, with the Western Port Library, but with every library represented here today, they serve as a bastion of light and knowledge to the community for the past number of years. James, Chapter two, verses one through six, from God's Word, it's very clear that we are not to favor the rich over the poor because our Lord Jesus Christ is the champion of the poor. So why not consider cutting executive, executive salaries for maybe even those of the commissioners with the missing budget shortfalls that we've become quite accustomed to? But with that being said, across the narrative of history, humanity has sought knowledge and wisdom, sacrificing their very lives so that we can have what we do today. So in conclusion, keep the Western Port Library and all libraries open for through its doors is the gateway to knowledge and a greater future. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Todd Logston?
Right, uh, thank you, trustees. My name's Todd Logston, sixty-three, Victoria Lane, Frostburg. Also, the mayor of the city of Frostburg, speaking in that capacity. Uh, just first, thank you. I understand, um, the work that you all do, and you all volunteers probably wondered why you're still volunteering to do this after tonight. Budgeting's hard. I mean, I just came from a meeting where we're talking about our own budget for the city. There's never enough money to go around to get it. And I'm thankful that I think we're at least taking a step in the right direction of finding a budget that allows us to keep all six branches of the library group. And I think that's everybody's goal, that's everybody's number one goal. If it gets to the point, again, you know, hoping not, but if it gets to the point where a closure has to be made, look somewhere else because we on the western end of the county, it's not our turn anymore. It's somebody else's turn. We're standing in a building that is, that is indicative of that. There were, at one point in time, there were four high schools in the western end of the county. We went to three, we went to two, we went to one. We get it. I mean, there's population shrinkage, there's loss of resources, but the western end of the county is not the only place where that has. Population of Cumberland is thirty to forty percent less than it was forty years ago. Again, we're not suggesting cutting any resources of any kind. We want to keep all six branches open. If it comes to that, look somewhere else because it's not our turn anymore. Thank you.
Laurie Meredith?
Laurie Meredith, and I live outside Midland, Maryland. Have a couple of comments. Um, the funds for the collections, uh, that's something that could be assisted by fundraising by all the various friends groups, which might help, um, absorb some of the cuts that are going to need to be made there. As far as administrative staff, we are way too heavy on that, and some of those are going to need to go. That's, you can't have that much administrative cost when you are dealing with a nonprofit. Make some of those positions part-time. You'd still have the person, um, but we would save a lot of money. I'm wondering if the Western Port Friends Group would be able to pay for the flood insurance that is being cut from the budget? Is that something that's possible? Uh, the security guard in South Cumberland, what can he really do? I don't imagine he's allowed to put his hands on anyone. I certainly hope he's not because that would open the library to considerable lawsuits. So if all he's doing is sitting there, put up a camera, a lot cheaper. Um, another suggestion, how do juvenile services, have them come down? Schedule a couple of people to come in and meet with them there. Once juveniles are required to go there, they won't want to go there. And when they see their friends having to meet with the juvenile agent there, it'll be a place they'll want to avoid. And that location is horrible. It needs to change. It's never going to be a safe location. So do some grant writing and find a place where perhaps you could combine the two Cumberland libraries into one and have it in a good location. I would suggest locating it by the Chick-fil-A because that's the safest place in Cumberland. The police are in and out of there all day long. As far as the grounds crew and snow removal and those costs, the county detention center has a work crew. They go out every day, at least six days a week that I know of. I'm sure if someone contacted them, they would be able to come up with a schedule to bring a work crew in, do all the regular maintenance. You'd be amazed what those young men can do and what it means getting out of the four walls. I don't know about, uh, snow removal. They wouldn't have access to plows, but they would certainly have shovels, and they can spread rock salt as well as anyone else. Um, I would also like to point out that there are a lot fewer people here tonight because it's in Frostburg, and a lot of people up the creek are not as fortunate as I am. I have a car, I have a license, I have money for gas. A lot of them do not, and it's just not possible for them to come to meetings or to get to libraries that are located so far away.
Kit Pepper Lescolin? I probably butchered that name. But I'll set it for. Thank you. Hi, Kit Pepper Lescolin, I live at two eleven James Court. First of all, no libraries should be closed. This is the worst time in the history of our country even to consider it. And I have to applaud all of you who have been to these meetings and been loud for so long. This is my first meeting. Good job. However, as we speak, at six P M. this evening, all of the Department of Education offices are being blocked, and all the employees have been told to stay home until Wednesday morning and wait for their instructions. As education resources for underprivileged children are disappearing at an unbelievable rate, the, the local libraries, especially in our underserved areas, are going to need to step up. We can't close any libraries. I have to say, I was pleased with the conduct of the board and the vision of the board, but I want to share something with you. All y'all need to be at the county. I was there February twentieth, they had a budget workshop meeting. No public was there. I watched it later on the visual thing. They are, they have every excuse they need to give you no money in their minds. At the mission meeting, where I tell you, they give you ten minutes, and you can talk about whatever you want. At the meeting, without any discussion, they had a unanimous vote to add six hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the county budget. And the only thing it said on the agenda was unexpected credit card collection fees. I was aware of the library situation, and I sent an email to the county to ask Jason Bennett, what the heck is that about? I figured it had to be some kind of mistake or something. And he responded to my email, and he says, I'd much rather tell you on the phone. Can I call you? And so he called me, and he told me that for years, the Allegheny County Commissioners had refused to pass on credit card collection fees to people who charge their utilities and their property taxes to the county. A year ago, I guess it got to be too many, too much money, and the current commission said a year ago that they would start charging people as everybody else does. I shouldn't be able to charge ten thousand dollars on my credit card and have the county eat the fee. So they decided they were not going to eat these fees anymore. And I was like, okay, explain to me unexpected six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And he said, oh, well, we had a problem with the software company, and they didn't get it right. And now we have to pay all the fees that weren't collected because the software company didn't do their job. First of all, my first question was, I hope you're suing them. And he said, maybe. But we need to be at the county, look at the meetings online. I think these people appear to be doing everything they can be doing, but they are only going to be able to act with what the county gives them. So squeaky wheel gets the grease. County Commission meetings.
There are no public comment online, correct? Any announcements or upcoming programs we need to give back or note? None. Okay.
Good suggestion. Could you give me both of this, these are both budgets on the website so that everybody can see it? And number two, the point that just made, the county commissions are totally lying. The more you pay attention to this, the more you're willing to do everything to do this, the less likely they'll do things much that you don't want. So get out there and get active and do this. And if you just send an email, find out about this in future accounts. Make that, you're telling yourself.
Okay. Do we have a note coming around?
Thank you all.